Council has returned to open session. Next section is A, petitions, communications, and requests. This is a time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action in this meeting, but may ask the city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have it? Can you come up to the party and just give us your name and address?
Yeah. My name is Nicole Stinn, 602 North White Fox Road. I'm the county engineer. I'm here just to offer a few comments kind of on the bridge back to the Boy Scout Lodge, but also I had heard just of a few different structures or different projects that the city is looking at and just thought I might offer up some ideas of maybe non-traditional things that could save a bunch of money, some rubber tank or cars and pipes. So just wanted to let you guys know that I'd like to talk with somebody at some point.
Okay. Thanks very much. Anyone else?
Just a reminder, tonight's both Democratic and Republican caucus night, so 7:00 PM for anyone who's interested in attending.
B is minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Would you like to take the minutes of January 15 and January 22 of 2018, resolution on payroll for period ending January 20, 2018, and paid on January 26, 18, and a resolution on bills and the funds list?
I move to approve collectively. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion approved. C, general agenda. Item one is a second reading of opposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the official zoning map. The city of Webster City is provided under section 121.06 of the Code of Ordinances of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 for rezoning property R1, which is a single-family dwelling, and District R2, multiple-family dwelling, District C3, highway commercial, which is District of said property being located on Fair Meadow Drive in Webster City, Iowa. Zach, did you want to say something on that?
I'll sit up here. As far as I said, for camera purposes, it's easier to come up here. Okay. I just wanted to quickly go over this cost-sharing agreement, intersection cost-sharing agreement, and address any questions that you guys may have or anybody in the audience may have. I know there were some questions last reading. We couldn't really talk a lot about what was in the agreement because obviously we were waiting on QuickStar to sign off and say that any changes that they may have. But they were really good to work with. They didn't really have any major issues with what we were proposing. Couple highlights that I wanted to hit. First, QuickStar was agreeing to pay. In regards to the intersection, Superior and Fair Meadow, QuickStar is agreeing to pay the first $412,800, which is what's the makes-up option A. There was two options, city considered option A, option C. That is what option A essentially covers. The city then would be responsible for all costs on top of that, which I think is, total cost was just over $612,000 or something. So it would be another $200,000 the city would be responsible for. In addition, both parties are agreeing to pay 50/50. For any change orders that may come up in the future, obviously QuickStar would want to see those change orders and agree with it. That way, the city's not agreeing to put up something that isn't necessary. Timeline, construction timeline, once this is all goes through, second reading, third reading, if you guys choose to waive it, 30 days after that, then we would have to get started. As far as Ken Wessler, we'd have to start working with Snyder to begin the process of getting this started. It has to be done by December 1, 2019, which seems like a little ways away, but with everything that goes on, obviously with construction timelines and all that, it would be here before we know it. Another big concern everybody had that we had in the agreement was regards to QuickTrip's, QuickStar's, also most QuickTrips, site plan. We have in there now that QuickTrip agrees to not substantially change add or differentiate from its project's site plans presented to the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, which is noted as exhibit B attached, without first bringing it before the council for review and approval. So what they've agreed to, what you guys have seen with regards to fences, trees, no overnight parking, no scale, all of you guys have already seen, they're agreeing that they're not going to substantially change from that in the construction process. If they decide in the future, for example, that they want to add or change something up, they just have to come back before the council, then the council has the ultimate decision as to whether it's something they want to change or not, or to allow to change or not. And city's jurisdiction and control, this intersection will always be maintained under the city's jurisdiction also, bills will be maintained, so the city will be responsible for snow removal and all of that. Another concern everybody had was, what if QuickStar turns around and sells this tomorrow to Casey's, then Casey's comes in and puts a scale? Well, this agreement we have in there, it binds all successors and assigns. So it says, "This agreement shall be binding upon all and shall adhere to the benefit of the parties certa and their successors and assigns." So if, for example, they ever were to sell or anything like that, the party taking it would obviously take it with the responsibility to live by this agreement. Other than that, just standard language. So if you guys have questions about the agreement, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
That answers everything that I've been approached by community people, very thoroughly. So, thank you.
The one question I have, again, I guess I brought up last week, last time we talked, was about the bait and switch. Okay, so we've agreed to this, and they come back six months down the road, a year down the road, and want to put a scale, overnight parking in. And then the existing council will make that decision at that time.
Correct.
And I think you used some language that indicated it may or may not happen. I guess I would feel better if we had assurances that is something that we're not going to have to look at in the foreseeable future.
It sounds everything that we've talked with QuickStar, they're not planning on making any of those changes. It's just an added benefit for them, I guess.
Yeah, come on.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Wade Dumont with QuickTrip Lacrosse, and it was quite an adventure driving tonight. You guys have more snow than we do in Minnesota. The question, sir, that you brought up, yes, we have no intent to bring back before you the scale or additional truck parking. Again, I can say that based on the management that's there right now, that's what we've agreed to. Things do change in business, so I can't guarantee you five, 10, 20 years from now that may happen, but at this point, there's no intent to do that.
Other question, I got a letter, as all the other council did, from a lady that's moved into that area and is kind of concerned, very much concerned about the impact on the scene, I guess, you know, view, you know, as far as that place going in. And my understanding is there's going to be a six-foot wooden fence around the perimeter of your place that is going to have enclosed with shrubs and bushes?
Yes, sir. The landscape plan that's been approved, actually, there it is, shows the plantings along the north side, as well as the privacy fence noted as well. You can see kind of the dashed line furthest to the north. So that is on the approved plan.
So the privacy fence is just on the north side?
North side and the west side, yes, sir.
And they already have a six-foot fence there as well. The other bit, so there'll be two fences there.
What we have offered to the neighbors when we had the neighborhood meeting is if they don't want it, they could request to take that off. So in my mind, that's still on the table, but then we'd have to come back to the city to make sure that, yeah, that the neighbors do want this off in this section. It's easiest just to leave it all on. So right now, we're planning just to leave it on, and if we get a request for some reason to take that off, we'll evaluate it at that time.
Could you answer what percent of your business on the gas islands and the diesel islands, what percent is the purpose of gasoline, the other percent of tractor-trailer rigs? From other, I mean endeavors, I mean, it's hard to speculate what happened here, but is it 10%? Was it 90%? 50/50?
Well, at this point, you can see we have 20 stalls for regular gasoline cars. There will be a diesel pump there as well, but it's not going to be... We set it up specifically so that the longer vehicles don't want to go into the main canopy in front of the store, which is for the cars. The diesel island has three stalls, so 20 to three.
14%. If you figure it that way.
Yeah. Now, exactly how much they're each going to be used, that's still, we don't know for sure.
Yeah, I've had several people question. We have worked on the intersection, and then Fair Meadow itself, once they start coming over with the heavier traffic, because it was pretty much residential and commercial and not without the heavy equipment coming in, and you know, it was prevent a heavy equipment transporter hauling the caterpillar or something like that. I mean, that's going to be pretty hard on the roads.
And again, they still have to follow the laws regarding loads and those kinds of things that the city has established.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody that's came forward, both for and against it in the community. I think if you take a minute and look back at the timeline of this, I feel we've made some compromises, both the city and QuickStar, and I appreciate that. And I also want to greatly thank the Planning and Zoning Commission. We wouldn't be in this position, making these compromises and making it a better fit for Webster City and those residents who it may affect, without their work months ago. So I thank them for their work on that.
Another question I've had asked, and I don't know who would answer that, what would be the property tax generated for this business once it gets established? Does anybody have an idea?
On the value that would be generated?
Well, we're going to put that in, and then there'd be the infrastructure going on top of that. So I mean, what would be the property tax on the structures and the land to the city? I guess I'd like to know what that would be.
It'd probably have to be assessed after it's built.
No, I'm just asking.
Sure. Like a rough estimate, sure. Yeah. Probably a lot more than the land's pulling in now.
Oh, yeah.
It is interesting, figurative to factor in, though.
Yeah. Did you have anything else to talk about for that next section as well?
No, I think we can touch on Snyder's amendment when we get to that, unless you have any specific questions regarding to the ordinance, to rezone it.
I think Zach covered it pretty good.
I'll move to approve.
To approve second reading?
I'll second.
Do we roll call vote?
Yeah, we'll roll.
Okay, this is to approve second reading of the ordinance amending the official zoning map. Talbot?
I'm going to get a reserved, yes, with a lot of questions that need to be answered. I would like those by the third reading, if we could get something.
So yes, reserved?
Yeah, reserved, yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
So seeing we've got second reading, would you like to waive the third reading?
With the thought of the construction timelines and us trying to get that intersection done by the first of the year, I'd like to waive the third reading.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Roll call again?
So we're all calling, yes.
This is to waive the third reading of the ordinance amending the official zoning map. Welch?
I'd preface this, my vote is yes, but that being the fact that we have something in writing with the building conditions and such, and the timeline of the construction, so yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
I'm not in favor of waiving the third reading, no. Still questions to be answered.
Okay. For a call for a motion to pass and adopt the ordinance?
I'll move to pass and adopt.
Second.
So we'll roll call that one, too.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKenny?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
No, not until I get more answers.
Welch?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll go to item two, is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an intersection cost-sharing agreement with QuickTrip Incorporated of Wisconsin Corp. A Wisconsin corporation. Items also include engineering costs, opinion, concept, C, QuickStar, Fair Meadow intersection, and engineering turning movements.
Yeah, this is the agreement that Zach went over, outlining the cost-sharing responsibilities, the parameters of the agreement that Zach discussed in terms of any future changes to the site having to come before the council for review and approval. If you have any specific questions to that, somewhat tied to that, the next agenda item number three is the amendment for Snyder Engineering. If you approve the cost-sharing agreement, we'll then move forward, recommend approval of the engineering services agreement so that Snyder and Associates can formally begin working on the detailed plans for that intersection.
So just because I know there'll be confusion, this is not getting rid of the medians entirely. It's shaving back the north median. Mike, is that right?
Yeah, the... Let me pull it up on the screen.
And to shape, to get rid of them entirely would more than double our cost of this whole intersection project, right?
That's correct. So when QuickStar had approached Snyder and Associates to look at the issue of the intersection, they came back with three options. All three options at a minimum comprised of work being performed at the three corners, the southwest corner, the northwest, and the northeast corner, to widen the radiuses so that vehicles and semi trucks can make that turn much more smoothly and reduce the potential for them to drive over that curb and/or the median. So that's addressing the three issues. Plan C, Plan B and C then went a little more extensive to that, and when staff reviewed it, we went with Plan, we favored Plan C because it was a much more comprehensive long-term solution to not just the immediate corners, but also just the approaches as vehicles traveling southbound on Superior. So Plan C incorporated tapering the median on the north side and accommodating two lanes of traffic, two southbound lanes of traffic, so that you keep traffic as it is and you eliminate the merger that occurs when people reach that median. As you approach the intersection, then the two lanes become, one, a right-hand turning lane, and the other lane on the left side would then become a through lane, so that vehicles traveling southbound can just travel straight on through. We did ask Snyder to come up with preliminary engineering analysis or assessments of what it will cost to remove the medians and identify some potential issues. They estimated, came back, and what you see on the council packet, on the cost opinion, Plan C, as outlined, would total $613,900. The removal of the medians and then realign the road and repouring of the concrete would add an additional $141,800. As Zach alluded to, the agreed amount that QuickStar has agreed to contribute to the improvement of the intersection is equal to Plan A, which was the minimum plan, valued at some $483,000.
$400,800. So it wouldn't double our cost?
It would for the city's contribution, essentially.
The city's contribution would be $200,000?
75%.
Right. Would passing the item in front of us now and the next item with Snyder and Associates lock us into not knocking down the medians?
If there's a consensus among the council to see the medians removed, then we can work with Snyder to remove that. One of the concerns with removing the medians is that it does provide a safety, level of safety barrier for vehicles to avoid vehicles swerving or driving onto incoming traffic. I mean, especially in conditions like today. Just this evening, there was a plow truck that took out one, took out one of the stop signs after, from what I understand, hitting one of the medians. So the medians presumably stopped him from going onto incoming traffic of the road and just damaging, taking out a stop sign.
I think, not that I have this problem with my Chevy Cruze, but the big median challenge is when they were coming from McDonald's, turning south, they couldn't make that corner. And with the widening of that corner, I think that should eliminate that problem. I mean, that's the median that was getting hit a lot, from what I've seen.
Do you have the drawing that kind of shows people how much of the median on the north side is going to be cut back as you're extending? You can remove a big chunk anywhere.
It's blue right there. Right here.
Isn't it pretty well show?
So here, if you can make the outline, I don't know if the camera captures that home clearly enough. Let me actually flip this, it'll probably be, look easier.
Disagree? So the yellow is existing, the blue?
Yellow's existing, blue is will be cut back, and it would essentially stop where the ST is at. So the blue would be the new redesigned center median, the yellow's the current, so that's how much would be cut back.
So there'd still only be one lane going into the intersection, bottleneck into one lane?
No, you would have the two lanes.
There's two lanes all the way.
Coming here, let me show you the other diagram.
Could see where the...
Coming north, there's only one lane. So you have two lanes up to the stops, up to the light, and then the right lane will turn right, and the left lane will go straight ahead.
The black line is the lane divider?
Right. The problem, the only problem I see is, okay, if the tractor's coming through town, we widen that. The northbound side's fine now because it's widened there at the corner and whatever's taken back. I think that we've taken away the narrow part of the road there for them. But on the south side, that big long one that goes back all up to Red Bull Drive, that one's still a problem.
And that's where the accident occurred today?
What about when fire trucks are trying to get out, Chuck? They get caught in a red light, there's no lane for anybody to go to. Has that been an issue in the past?
It has, and what ultimately we have to do is go opposing traffic for very long ways and then still potentially wait for the intersection to open up to be able to get back in the correct lane.
Glad you brought that up, because that was some of the main concerns, is emergency management on the intersection. And I'll just give you my thoughts on this, is if we're going to reconstruct that intersection, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, like ideally. The $141,000 would be the difference between doing it, which I feel is, the majority of the community would like to see it. Frankly, we spent $141,000 on way dumber things. All right, so I just feel that if we're going to do this, let's do it right. We're literally going to bottleneck the intersection anyway during the construction. When we reopen it, I hope it'd be ideal.
Now, bear in mind with the funds, whether it be lost funds or road use funds, those are funds that are, regardless if it's this project or any other project, they're typically always dedicated, or if not required by state statute, to be used for road improvement. So we're not taking $141,000 from a general fund, we're taking $141,000 from other road improvement projects that would otherwise see the benefit of those funds, so.
No, I understand, and I totally get where you're coming from, this isn't like this money we have in the couch cushions. But with that said, we were going to have to do this anyway. We knew we were going to have to pull those curbs back, and we're looking at this plan as something we were going to front the bill 100% for. Luckily, QuickStar has offered to help us improve that, so we might as well take the money we thought we were going to spend anyway and do it right, because they're already fronting a large portion of that. So I see it's still a win-win, and we can do it optimally.
Yes, Ken?
I'd like to present a couple of options or things to think about. Number one, with the median there, it has an, like what a lot of traffic engineers call a calming effect, because that person that's in that car, even though those wheels could go up over that curb, which obviously we've seen truck, tractor, trailers do that, that person that's driving tends to slow down because they're getting to a narrower portion of that road. With it being wide open, or without medians there, like today, for instance, with the snow cover, you would never see the painted lines. So you don't know if that, if you are northbound, that that vehicle that's in the left lane that's going to turn into Fair Meadow going west, if he can stop, not, or if that vehicle behind him then keeps on going. The other thing that is nice about that median, Fire Chief mentioned that, as you did, Logan, there could be an issue with an emergency vehicle. If there's traffic tied up in that location, whether you have the median there or you remove the median, you're still going to have traffic in that location. With the median there, those truck, fire trucks will go right over that median. There's no question in my mind that they will go over that median if they need to go over that median. The great thing that is happening with this intersection is that if you are southbound, as shown on here, that you have two lanes right to that intersection. And obviously, if you were in the outside lane, you have to turn to the right. If you're in the center lane, then you would continue on going south, but you also have that option to be in the very inside lane, which is the left turn lane, which would allow you to turn east onto Fair Meadow. That's a perfect location to terminate that two-lane traffic that is southbound, because obviously when you get on the other side of the intersection, you are forced to go into a one lane. Not only because you have to turn off to go onto Highway 20 if you're going west, if you're going southbound, you've got to go to two-lane because you're now going over that bridge, so it's oncoming traffic. So this makes a perfect transition for that to happen. The other thing that I see is it's controlled by traffic signals. Most of the intersections that we have in Webster City are not controlled by intersections. This happens to be a busy intersection, and it will allow for traffic, truck traffic, and small vehicles, whether they be motorcycles or cars, to maneuver this intersection. So I'd like you to just think about those kinds of things. When we looked at what we were going to do to this intersection, our thoughts were the safety of not only the person driving, but the person, maybe that's a pedestrian, because now he can, if he can't make it all the way across, he knows that, you know what, I get to that median, I at least have a loo, kind of an island of safety. So I guess, think of those kinds of things.
Where was the accident located?
The accident was located right up here. There's a stop sign right here and a light pole, and they got taken out, right there. Those are, just got taken out before the council meeting. I don't know how that plow came in, but it took them out. I don't know if it slid into the intersection, I don't know the details.
That's why I'm confused, I don't know how that ties to the medians.
Well, the median is there, if that, if by chance that plow happened to go that direction, it took that out as opposed to going to the median, and the median would have stopped that vehicle from sliding. And the median would have stopped that vehicle from sliding across.
The the question is then, you know, instead of taking that, because this is the narrowest one right where that car is there.
The south side.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's the narrowest piece that would be left once. And and instead of taking the island away, would you take, would you move, you know, if you put two more feet of pavement on to the side there, so you move the gutter over?
Well.
That would then give you the width that they that the people are after.
The the only the only problem, then again, we get into that scenario where we're not, we're removing that calming effect.
Well, it's still there, isn't it?
It's it's still kind of there, but now you have people that think, oh, it's a little wider, I can get my vehicle past that other vehicle. And now all of a sudden it become what was should be a single lane becomes a two lane.
Well, it wouldn't be.
Because we're looking, look at the look at the pickup now, if we add two more feet to that, I can see I can see a motorcycle going by there, I can see a a small car trying to pinch by it.
But we do need to have, we do need to have white road there because we are still a farming community, so so we still have the problem with those fellows coming to town.
Right, and I and I understand that if with a tractor with big duels on it or a high boy sprayer, uh they're they're gonna have an issue with that and they may have to take that sprayer or that those duels and put them up on that curb.
Wouldn't we be better off if we made it a footwater? Whatever it takes to make to get it.
Well, yeah.
Is there drainage right there?
Yeah, there's drainage all along there, it drains. So we have intakes that we have to that we would need to deal with.
Because isn't that what you're thinking of nicely for or not?
I'm thinking that I think the community will have a hard time with us closing that intersection to to fix it and not really fixing the problem that most of the communities had and a lot of the outside of the town farmers coming into town have had, like you're mentioning. Widening the road is eh on that side is is a viable solution. I just think the northside median, um I know we're cutting it back a little bit, another concern I've heard is.
We're also widening the road down that end there.
Correct. Coming up the hill, when you're heading southbound out of town, you kind of come up a hill and that median's kind of abruptly there and obviously there's a merge sign. But like again, like a day like today, I think the snow would actually cover, if it before the snow's plowed, you wouldn't know if a median's there or not. A a car could actually clip the curb um if the if the snow was not plowed because you know the kind of uh um brings everything to the same level where the snow may may fall around it. Um I I mean, there's pros and cons either way, I just where I'm standing right now today, I would like to see the medians, at least the northside medians removed fully. Uh and then the the divert being a a painted on solution and I know there's such some psychology and some and some um stuff behind it that would uh the the raised medians would be more ideal, you know, kind of where you're coming from, I totally understand that. This is just where I'm sitting today, a hundred and forty one thousand uh additional dollars to do the intersection the way I think the community would like to see it is where I'm at. Is it a a hundred and forty one to take both medians out or just that north one?
Both.
Alright, so it might even be less if we do a compromise and just take the north one out.
I want to clarify something real quick so that it's understood. As far as the uh fire apparatus traffic, um the additional lane that would be added on the south side solves that problem. So I if we're talking about the north side, the traffic will be diminished or can move ahead where that's not ever been a problem. Um it is a safety problem coming back north, coming down that hill without a median as far as head-on collisions. And we have had really bad accident in in a history of uh Webster City in regards to that. But as far as going south, that additional lane that would be created would solve the problem of getting fire apparatus through on the same side, so.
Um maybe I remem- I'm remembering this incorrectly, but when we redid this intersection back in oh nine or two thousand ten, wasn't it jointly funded with um the state or the county? Wasn't there some DOT involvement in that? And I think at that time, medians were required for a safety issue by DOT.
That's correct.
Maybe, there's lots of things we look back that we should have done differently with the design, but that was one of the things I remember, DOT required there'd be medians.
See, when you go south, like when they change it to two lanes coming up the hill, you're not gonna have that problem anymore where you come up the left hand lane and there's an island in front of you. Because it's not gonna be there, the island will still be there except that the lane won't, the the other lane's gonna be over far enough, there'll be two lanes going past there. But I don't necessarily know, think that the that the uh that north side one's gonna be as big a problem, it's not gonna be anywhere near as big a problem as it is now.
Yeah, and the other thing too, if you go that, if you go to that picture, if we pi- if we put painted um separation there or median, um I'm not so sure that that sign stays there. But the sign is there now for them to uh, you know, merge, yeah.
Again, I'm not trying to be contentious, that's that's just where I'm standing, I I'd like the consensus to be to take at least the north median down to to pavement level, but again, I I've spoke quite a bit, I'm opening.
See how it goes, you see how it goes there, it's you how it goes right there. That white line's gonna keep going up there and there'll be enough room for that.
That reflective sign's still there, right? So the snow thing's a non-issue, right?
Right, but I don't know if that's painted, I don't know if if that sign will stay there or not.
No, I was talking, I was in reference to what Logan was saying, I couldn't remember if there was a sign there or not. I'm not awake usually until I hit highway.
Okay.
Well, I think the
Well, I think it's worth discussing.
Yeah, and things can get changed in that regard. It'd have to be done soon, but I think.
And that that's why I I asked the question, I would hate to to move forward with this with it being understanding that we leave the medians without without extensive discussion, making sure we're all on the same page what we want. If moving forward this is a is a is a a step in fixing the intersection, I'm for it. Eh uh I just don't want to be locked in on rails to do it maybe what we see on the draft right now.
This resolution would just basically have us enter into that cost sharing guarantees the amount they're gonna contribute. We could decide to do whatever we want with that intersection as far as obviously with consulting with the engineers.
Well, as long as we get it done within the timeframe, right?
Right.
Yeah, that's the metro, that's the only real major constraints that if we're gonna they wanna see it out obviously before they get the doors open.
Sure.
I I have one question, though, this has started last August, but what street repair project is gonna be curtailed for the additional two hundred thousand dollars to meld funds with this? I mean, because we know there's a finite amount of repaired money in Webster City and there's infinite amount of streets that need fixed. I guess that's the bottom, you know, s- situation, so I mean, where are we pulling a project from to enable this to happen?
I think, and Ken could probably add more to it, but at least the projects that we had lined up in in terms of our CIP uh list, those are up for this year are still moving forward. Probably in the grander scheme of things is more so um planning for some of the broader projects such as the desire to have Second Street redone from um Hy-Vee up to the Overpass Drive. Um we typically try to budget for complete um street improvement or or street resurfacing and infrastructure improvements, um at least one street block a a year and so I think we're still moving forward with that, but there are other projects that are probably be curtailed um that these funds would otherwise go towards in that five-year view.
Depending upon uh, there's two different funds we're utilizing to potentially help pay for this project, one is local option, sales tax, which you can use for uh road repairs or street repairs and then road use tax, which uh you try to use as much as possible for repairing bridges and uh those types of structures. You know, it's it's hard to say, well, you're not gonna get that block done, you know, which block is it gonna be? Uh we kind of pushed a lot of stuff back, um had some uh issues on Buxton Drive where uh because of this, we would not be able to uh complete those on Buxton Drive, those if they get pushed back a year, um I don't know that that's gonna, it's a gravel street now, uh it needs some drainage issue corrections. So we have looked at that, uh we've done some preliminary engineering, um trying to keep ahead of this because, you know, not knowing where this stood, uh so that's why it was still on the table and now with this, it's it's pretty much kind of off the table and it'll be back on the table probably next fiscal year. So that's where we're at, um we're still gonna, you know, try and do as much as we can with the amount of money that we've got. Uh I know there's a lot of streets in Webster City, you know, right off the top of my head, I can think of like five or six that without any problem that need to be repaired and that's not even mentioning uh Second Street.
Okay, well, I appreciate, yeah, because I just want, you know, because of what.
Yeah.
Resource, thank you.
Thanks, Ken. All right, so call for a motion to to uh approve this uh resolution.
So.
Second.
Anyone?
This is a roll call?
Yeah, we're roll call.
This is a resolution authorizing Mayor and City Clerk to enter an intersection cost sharing agreement with Quick Trip, the Wisconsin Corporation. Um McKinney?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
Yeah.
Welch?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes. Motion approved, uh item three is a resolution approving amendment number three to the Engineering Services Agreement of Snyder and Associates Incorporated of Ankeny, Iowa for Superior Street and Fair Meadow Drive intersection improvements.
So maybe we'll just discuss to a left, yeah, I'll move things, so moved. Did you have a question?
I I I was gonna let it go to vote quick, but I mean, I'll just ask Daniel this one more time. Uh when I we talked to the officer earlier, he said if the council consensus is there, that's the direction they'll go. We're authorizing an engineering firm to work on this. Uh what would be their marching orders if this passes?
Well, I I didn't hear consensus from the council, you guys were looking at either removing the northside medians, which still poses the issue on the southside median, um and then the the other concept of just widening that road a a foot or two, so um I mean, we'll look at what the what the cost estimates for both are. My guess is probably on widening that road might be the lesser of the two options because you're not having to remove or cut out as much concrete from there. Um so that would probably be my recommendation once we look at those cost estimates.
So we'll get us estimates on both sides, that they'd be essentially working on all solutions.
But well, you have the estimate to remove all the medians, so it's just be, but I I don't know that solving, removing the median on the north side uh without doing the south side does us any good um without doing both entirely.
No, fair enough, I just want to make sure again that they're working towards a solution that if we do change kind of the plan, uh it'll accommodate, so that's the only.
We're not, yeah, we're not sealed to this.
Is it itemized in a way that if we decided to widen the road on the south side and eliminate the median on the north, could we pick that price out of that? You know what I'm saying?
We could.
But currently it's not, I currently they just gave you one number estimate for both medians, right?
And again, I'm not I I'm not trying to slow anything or be contentious, I I'm 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 asking these questions now because it's much easier to get this out now than it is, you know, moving forward with the plan, so that's the reason I ask.
Okay.
I'm motion to approve.
So motion by no one?
Our someone already seconded it, right? Oh, right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same song. Motion approved. Okay, item four is a presentation by Richard Strowner uh representing American Legion Post one ninety one and the Boy Scouts Troop of seventeen, um Boy Scouts Troop Seventeen on a proposal for Kendall Young Park.
Whoa, what is it?
Pictures.
I'm excited.
You nervous?
Good evening, uh my name's Richard Strowner, two seven nine four Boone River Drive. I am with the American Legion, but I'm also the chartered organizational rep for Boy Scout Troop Seventeen. I've been involved with scouts for about thirty-three years. And one of the things that the troop does a lot is work out at Kendall Young out at the Scout Lodge that's out there. And one of the things, uh we just had an Eagle Scout Project, Dave Bergerstrand, the scout master's here, he just redid all the bathrooms on the lower end and I know you folks have talked about opening up the campgrounds. Well, we we presented some information to the Parks and Rec and they just thought we should bring it here and talk to you folks. We've got some real big issues with that whole area and with your thoughts of turning that into some camping. The first and foremost is there's no drinking water out at Kendall Young. All the wells have been shut down due to nitrates, we we've got a really nice bathroom out there, but you can't even wash your hands when you use it. All the sinks have been removed, we have no water whatsoever. So we're wondering, is there a way that we can get water from the edge of the pavement that's heading out to Kendall Young and get at least an all-weather hydrant put somewhere close to the bathroom so we'd have potable water and we can re-feed the bathrooms? I don't know how that would happen.
Well, that was a, that was one of the discussions that we had earlier on.
Okay, but but we don't know if that, when when when, if that can be moved forward or I don't know how long that takes and I don't know if you were talking about running a main four-inch line or just running like a one-inch line and burying it forty-two inches just so we can get an all-weather hydrant? Or maybe a directional bore it and get it out there, whichever is the easiest and most economical way to do that. Do you have pictures?
Which pictures you want?
Just uh the one that says Kendall Young?
Yours?
The top one. That's uh that's for all of you who haven't been out there in a while, that's a picture of the Scout Lodge. What you're seeing here is what we're starting to see on the Scout Lodge, it needs some major work. Um the outsides, well, I see the patch, we had animals living in the top of the of the uh building, but you can see the damage uh that we've had. Uh and also you can see that the whole structure needs to be either painted or stained or or weatherproof. Uh a couple more pictures. That hole right there, the seal, there was an animal, I don't know what kind, was living up above the ceiling. Uh they've uh they've chewed on the doors as as we as we get in, uh and we've got wood rot around all the window frames on the building. You see the bottom of the door where it's all been chewed and worn off, so there's mice and stuff living inside. That building way in the back, that used to be an outhouse. It's, there's better pictures of it, there's some of the wiring, as you can see, all this wiring was chewed up and it's all eaten up by rodents and so none of the that picture right there, you know that picture where we said that the animals are up there? That area you can't get to and there was raccoons and stuff living up there, so it is filled with feces and stuff up in that attic. Uh some of the the lighting, it's all done with exposed uh Romex, there's Christmas tree lights hung all over the place out there. That's the attic, either another picture that's a better picture of the stain. That's over the new kitchen that you folks put in. There's been animals up in there and that's the feces and stuff that are coming through and the urine and it's stained the ceiling and stained the floor. That's up in the attic and that's all of the stuff that's up there, there's a couple more pictures. You can see it on all the boards, they've torn out all of the insulation on the back wall. Screens are ripped on the inside. Wood's starting to rot on the inside. And then probably uh, you know, we've got uh some issues with with screen damage. And just now, now this this uh is is another area we wanted to talk about, we don't have access to the Scout Lodge. We don't have access to it because the all-weather or the bridge that goes across White Fox is only open a couple months of the year when we have low water, when we have high water, we can't get to it or we have ice. So what we're wondering is uh uh is there a way that we can work with the city to have access from White Fox Road? Here's the map. Scout Lodge is up there. The only access we have is right here. And there's White Fox. And we were wondering if we, if there's a way we could work and just get a twenty-five foot drive to the backside of that Scout Lodge, just gravel. Maybe get uh landowners to offer us a an easement back there. I don't know if if we could and we don't have to worry about cross, that's that's a ninety-three foot crossing. And when the county engineer, we were talking about trying to get a railroad car flatbed and do that, it's too big for anything we we could get unless we get two and we put pilings in and and work on that to get over that. And when I got prices on an eighty-nine foot railroad car delivered, it's. And when I got prices on an eighty-nine-foot railroad car delivered, it's twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. That'll work for their bridge potentially for a bike path. But, you know, we, we, they're only eight foot wide, so they'd be pretty narrow to drive a truck across. Just recently, we went over there, Dave and I did, and we walked across the ice to get there. We couldn't drive across it. The other thing we're wondering is, since the city owns it, it, it was fixed up. You folks could rent it. You could rent it for everything. You could rent it for reunions, you could rent it for family gatherings, family outings. The scouts would always have access to it. But, you know, there's no bathrooms on that side. And unless we have a way to get to the other side, there's still no bathroom, so, you know, the, the old pit toilet that's there, the roof is caved in, the walls are busted in. Fif, twenty-five years ago, we used to use it. So.
You don't have any cost estimates, Richard, of any?
No, we're just, we're just trying to come and see what, what, you know, what I'd like to do, first thing is, we'll, as a troop, we'll work and do any electrical upgrades. I have a current master electrician's license, so we, we can get self-help to, to fix electrical in, in that building. But we'd like to have somebody come in that knows how to decontaminate those sections and get up in those sections and get all the animal stuff out of there. Because we probably shouldn't even be in there with all that stuff that's up in the attic. And those holes have now been blocked, but there's still other holes. I know we've had bats up in there. And there's holes alongside, there, there's some more ins, inside the, the, the building, but there's tunnels underneath it. We've, we've got an animal living underneath the, the lodge. So it's a, it's a, it's a great place. We used to camp there when I first moved to town and involved with the troop in eighty-five, eighty-six. And it's a, it's a great place to go, and the boys have a great time. But it just needs some TLC. That's the bathroom. That's what's left of it. So. There's another animal living under that. But I didn't know how we could approach this, what, what, what the city, you know, I know Parks and Rec doesn't have a whole lot of money. You know, how, is there a way we can approach this that, so we can open it up? And you folks could, if you want, they could, they could rent it out. Like I said, reunions, uh, uh, family outings. We've got a really nice flagpole out there, and the, the scouts did a beautiful job. They've got a really nice picnic area out there. You folks have done some really nice work. There's a refrigerator, a microwave, a stove in there. We just can't get to it.
Well, I know we've, we've talked about, you know, extending the bike trail to Kendall Young, and and this may be something we can roll into the improvements. You know, and, and I agree, I mean, I, you know, the, the scouts don't have the best facility to use up there. They make the best of it, which I really appreciate their open-mindedness, but it, it is subpar. But, no, I mean, I'm open to looking into this. Again, like, I guess we'd have to jump in with Kenton Parks and Recs again, and, and kind of see what that cost would be before we kind of just go, yeah, let's do it, you know? But I, I'm open to whatever comes back.
And then also, based on, on the county engineer's assessment, there might be a way that she can get cars for your bicycle or your, 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 your crossing, so you can extend the bike path out there. But if you're gonna extend the bike path out there, probably first thing, it'd be nice to have water out there.
Is, are there any, is there any heating and cooling to this building?
No, just a fireplace. I mean, like I said, we, we've camped there in the middle of winter, we've camped there in the summer. It's great to build a fire, and it's, it's a nice place, but, and especially now that there's the kitchen, so you don't have to cook outside if you wanted to have some, some boys out there for, uh, e, evening, uh, Sunday scout meetings they could help out there.
That's what I wondered. I remember they, when I was, my kids were, it was at the head principal's building, it'd be nice if they had a place of their own.
Yeah, and, and that would work really well, but we just can't get to it. The other day, we couldn't drive to it. We had to gingerly walk across three inches of ice, and there was water flowing underneath it, and boy, you fall off the bridge, and there's probably five foot of deep water right there, so any vehicle's gonna go sideways. And it's just not a safe way to get across there. When, when we got an inch and a half and the water's low and it's dry, we, we go out there. Like I said, the inside screens are shot. That's, that's the floor stain from the urine upstairs from the animals. So we know it's been pretty bad. And I don't know what we need to do to fix it. I know the scouts, we, we can get some help. I mean, kids can be out there. The only thing I'd like to see before we do anything, and I think we can get a lot of help, is if we can get the top two attics disinfected and cleaned out, so we don't expose anybody to, you know, somebody that's up there with respirators and stuff, and make sure that's all cleaned. And then we can work on sanding the floors and repainting and fixing boards and do that kind of stuff, but I, I almost hate to have anybody be in there with all that animal waste that's up above them.
Rich, real quick, years ago, we used to have, in fact, Legion used to be out there, not at the cap, the scout's cabin, but on the Kendall Young Park, and there was a road that went on north, on the east side of that.
Yep, that, that road does, but we still didn't cross the river.
Yeah, it goes up the county, the old county. Yeah.
Down to the right.
No, there was, it used to be a farmhouse up there, because I've been up there.
This is...
Yeah.
This is the road that goes past the river that way.
Yeah.
This is the road here. You can kind of see the old spillway right here. And then the road crosses right here up, and then goes over to the scout lodge up in here. It's really hard to see, but scout lodge is up in there. And we take a winding road that's been there for years up there. But if you look at, if you come this way with the, with the map, this land right here is owned by, I think, Linda and Ted Williams. So, and this is in CRP right now. They're farming this, and I think, I thought the Ravezas might own this piece, I'm not sure. But literally, if you could come in and go here to the corner, disturbing minimal amount, and pull in here, we walk this, it'd be very easy. This road that comes up here, swings up this way, comes in here, it's not far. You could come in and go around here and go in this way. Or if he would give you an easement right, you just go straight in here, you'd go straight into the scout camp. And if you did that, you've got water right here. You could bring water into the scout camp, so we'd have water on the scout camp side, we'd, we'd have water on the lower side, and then you've got all kinds of possibilities.
What's the big open piece to the east of?
This?
Yeah.
That's, somebody farms that, I think. Isn't that right? I, I think somebody is farming that piece of property. They lease it back to a farmer, this piece right there.
A little piece, yeah.
All right. Hate more to think about than...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's anything we can really do, but...
Well, we can, we can definitely work towards it. Now, now we know more about it, we can definitely, be something we can...
Yeah, it's, it's just something, we've got really nice thing out there, really nice area, and it's open, that's like I said, you could open it up to anybody. Anybody could rent it, anybody could camp out there, anybody could pitch a tent out there. But right now, it's pretty much unusable and unobtainable, except for maybe four months of the year.
Hi.
Okay.
I'd like to comment on the, um, Ian talked about the trail. There used to be an old bridge crossing White Fox Creek, and that's off of Jane Young Road, I believe it is now, at Dead End. Rough...
The abutments are still there.
Yeah, rough calculations here. You can get, he introduced the idea of railcars, a railcar, but like he said, I'm thinking a sixty-eight footer, which would be maybe twenty-five thousand dollars. You would have to put in an approach span with it. So the abutments are right in here. If you would put up here, kind of right along the edge, that railcar would span right where the river is. Up here could land right on the side, and you can have a forty-foot approach span, like steel beams with concrete in them. I'm thinking realistically, under a hundred thousand for the whole bridge, maybe less. I know that still sounds like a lot, but for a hundred-plus foot bridge, that's not, not a lot of money. But just, it's, and I'm talking only for a trail, not for, you know, not thirty foot wide for vehicles. But just thought I would bring to light that idea, that there's a relatively cheap solution for a crossing there. Assuming, you'd still have to look at all the free board requirements by the DNR, the floodplain permits and that type of thing, make sure that they would permit it, but just wanted to present that option.
I've bought them for five thousand. I've, I've bought themselves a few railcars, so. So, I'll have to keep my eye out for them next time.
I think the county engineer has an excellent idea, because it is on county ground, the county could fund it.
It is outside city limits. I mean, that's a...
That's true, I'm sorry.
But no, it, it's still, it is a good, great idea, so. Save us some money in the long run.
All right, thanks, thanks, Richard. Item five is a recommended approval of issuance of beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. A, renewal of Class C beer permit and Sunday sales for Dockstop Number Nine at 407 Close Drive. B is transfer of Class C liquor license five day for Brig, uh, for five days for Briggs Woods Golf Course to the Hamilton County Fairgrounds Show Arena for the Hamilton County Pheasants Forever Banquet, to be held on March twenty-sixth of twenty eighteen. And C is a new Class C liquor license and Sunday sales for El Patron Mexican Restaurant at 817 Second Street, formerly Godfather's Pizza. Call for motion?
I'll move to approve collectively. Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item six is a resolution setting a time and place for public hearing on proposed purchase agreement of city-owned property located in Dubuque and Pacific Railroad Edition of Webster City, Iowa, for February nineteenth at 5:35 PM. Ken, would you like to say?
Sure.
I'm bringing up the map and kind of tell you.
So everyone's familiar with Hy-Vee and where Godfather's Pizza used to be, the, the parcel right behind Godfather's that is along Prospect Street, is currently a city-owned parcel. The city in, in last year had considered an option that fell through for someone to develop it. We have a second offer for a developer that would like to put a Dollar Tree at that location. They've offered to purchase the property and also requested, as part of the purchase agreement, consideration of an access easement for what, what was Third Street, directly north of Pagel Windows and Doors. That parcel, as we went through this process, actually realized that it was vacated some years ago, a couple years ago, back in two thousand thirteen, so kind of saved a step in the process, but the agenda item before the council is to set the public hearing for the sale of the, of that parcel into a developer.
Okay.
We're just setting a date, right?
Yeah, correct.
I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item seven is a resolution providing for notice of hearing and proposed plans and specifications and proposed form of contract and estimate of costs for the twenty eighteen Wilson Brewer Park Cabin Foundations Project. This is for March fifth at 5:35 PM. Do I say anything on that candle?
Sure.
Sure.
Again, as you can tell from the memo, this is a four-phase project, and this is just for the log cabins itself, that this phase is to create the new foundations, about fifty or sixty feet to the east of, of the existing cabins. It's much higher ground there. Historically, since nineteen thirty, when they moved in here, there's a lot of standing water that's been there, and, and that'll take care of that problem there. And so the, the, that'll be the first phase to create the new foundations for both cabins, both the, the Wilson Brewer Cabin as well as the Jameson Cabin. Second phase will be to hire professional movers to move the cabins and the fireplaces together as a whole to the, and set them down in the foundation. Third phase will, will, uh, find somebody, uh, an artisan company to come in and, and do the re-chinking and to actually, or, excuse me, third phase will be for the roofing, the new roofs on that, and then the fourth phase will be to re-chink the cabins and to repair or replace any logs that need to be. And it's been a great project, and, and as you can kind of see from the, oh, besides some city funds, that we received another twenty-five thousand dollar donation on Friday, and so we're up well over two hundred thousand on the park itself.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see this go through, too. I remember about a year ago, we were talking, wondering if these things are gonna make it another winter. Well, they're making it, I think, but it's good to know we're, we're digging into it.
And back in eighteen fifty, they didn't build log cabins thinking they'd last a couple hundred years. I think back then, it was twenty or thirty years.
I can see, yeah, yeah.
It's a good idea to move to, that was a good suggestion, so.
Oh, very good.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks. I move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved.
Mayor and the rest of the council, I apologize, I have to excuse myself for prior engagement, but, again...
We've got the important stuff.
Yeah, like, you guys have it, right?
Except Lindsay, she, she might let you go.
Good luck, Lindsay, you'll do great, and chief, I look forward to seeing you guys go to that training, so. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Logan.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing the city clerk to certify to the, to the Hamilton County Treasurer for collection for abatement worked done by the city of Webster City.
Sure, this is a resolution to certify past due abatement costs for, for properties that we've abated, particularly, I think, most of these were for the, um, the summer months. This doesn't include any properties that we would have abated from store removal during these winter months. By doing this process, essentially, it places a, a note against the property for the city to, at some point, be able to recoup its cost. Typically, the process for abatement procedures is to do the abatements and then send the property as an invoice after multiple times. This is the next step for us to be able to, well, it's just a place of leaning against the property. The other option we would possibly have, if we considered, would go through a collection process, but the cost that we would recoup at that point would be significantly less. One of the downsides to do it this way is unfortunately, it's just the time it takes to try to recoup it, as the, the, the cost that we are falling against, is not automatically recouped, and it just takes time upon the sale or transfer or any change in ownership of the property.
Ken, call for a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Item nine is a motion on request from community vitality director for branding and website development. Lindsay?
Thank you, council. It's been a while, I think, since the city's, it's just been a few years since we took in an opportunity to think about who we are and what is our identity as a community, and we were looking at doing an upgrade to our city website. We use the revised platform currently. We could just do a reskining of that site, is what they call it, and give it a new look, but it doesn't change the content and the functionality of it. And so we started discussing, you know, what are our other options? If we're, if we're presented with this moment where we need to make an upgrade, could we do a better job and do something that's more comprehensive? And so we really wanted to think about more of a rebranding strategy. You know, a few years ago, something similar was done when we came up with the logo for Boone River Country, but this is about more than a logo. This would involve some stakeholder, you know, interviews and, you know, really trying to explore, do some asset mapping of what we have, what's valuable to the community, what is our image? Economic development, it's been kind of flipped on its head. It's really about attracting people, elevating the quality of life that you have in the community versus just attracting a, a firm to come here. You have to have the people, the bodies in order to attract those firms, and so from the community vitality standpoint, it's important that the image we project, it's clear that we have a sense of who we are and why we're special and unique in the state of Iowa and in the Midwest. And right now, the site we have is a little bit difficult to navigate. There's not the functions that we would like to see in the city website. And just on the whole, we're not sure that the image we're presenting really captures the essence of our community. We, we've gone through a lot of changes that have fundamentally changed us since the last time this was done. And so we think it's proper time to consider giving ourselves that kind of image overhaul going forward.
You know, I agree. I just think anybody coming to town wanting to look up some stuff on Webster City, the first place I would go is to our website. And it's not a great reflection of what we have to offer anymore.
And, and that is really, like I said, the, the era that we're in, that's where people are looking at. We're hearing stories of this continuously, that there are professionals that are being, being offered jobs and turning them down because from what they can see from the surface and doing some, just a little bit of online digging that this, they think it's not the kind of community they want to live in. And we know what a great community it is. We just think we can do a better job of representing it. We've, um, we've had a good relationship with who we've worked with in the past on these efforts. But we've, we've done that, we've gone that direction for quite some time and I think it's time to try something different. Any other questions about the proposal? We have Darcy here as well, so if there's.
Can you talk about a little bit for the people watching at home what the, what your proposal?
So what we're proposing is that we enter into a contract with in tandem marketing. Included in that process would be that brand, um, identity, the, the discovery meetings, um, two or three weeks of that. Developing the brand and, and the logo concepts and then moving into the website. It also includes up, an update to our city access channel, giving that a more modern look. And, and the ongoing maintenance of that. The proposed total cost is twenty-eight thousand one hundred. And it actually, you might have to help me out, isn't it?
Sure.
We provide some estimates that were done a few years ago. And, and really with the, the local control and that lock that maintenance, it's actually going to be more cost efficient for us to do it this way. And with just the revising, just the reskining with that revised platform, we just don't have the controls to make modifications down the road that we will with this development.
So, um, since we're talking about the website, and obviously this is a much larger project than just the website, it's just a component, it's the foundation of your brand. But when we're looking at this, we're, um, looking at utilizing, um, a platform that almost seventy-five million websites across the world are, are done on. The reason that I recommend it to my clients is the fact of the administration ease. You know, it allows you to go out very easily and add documents, remove things, upgrade photos, add ordinance, like the snow ordinance that's out right now, very easily to do that. It also will eliminate the monthly fees that are currently being paid right now. It'll do away with all of those, so if I understand correctly, it'll pretty much pay for itself and then with some cost savings from over a year. So, um, do you want me to give them the break there, Lauren? So the website, um, cost out of that twenty-eight one would be thirteen thousand dollars to build the site and provide admin support. I think in the proposal, we talked about being able to go out and help until the city gets to a point where, one, they either can take over the administrative functions through training by me, or, um, we enter into a routine or agreement where I take, you know, continue to do that. But it's got a year's worth of, um, updates included in that thirteen. When we talk about the brand strategy on this, Lindsay said we would go into a discovery phase first. And it's really when you're branding a community, it's more about finding the attributes that make you stand out from your competition. So part of that internal branding discovery is talking to key stakeholders and identifying where those attributes are. Also doing external work, that's going out and examining who those competitors are, identifying through the internal. Also, um, doing some qualitative analysis, going out and finding perception. Because in the marketing realm, perception is reality. We can think we're one thing, but people think you're something else, you are something else until you can prove to them that you're not. And with the competitive landscape right now for our area of the county, we have to differentiate ourselves from our competition. And so the timing is actually very good to be looking at doing this whole rebranding and utilizing the website is the foundation. It's a lot of times, as, as Brian said, it's that first impression. People coming in can't find what they're looking for. As Lindsay said, people then are easily turned off and won't look elsewhere and that's the last thing we want to do. Part of it is not only about recruitment, it's about retention. And we want to make sure that the people that are choosing to live here are proud of the fact that they live here. And we've kind of had a resurgence of pride with, you know, the, the regeneration of the movie theater kind of started to slow down and then Square came in and reminded us how proud we were of coming together collectively as a community. And so we want to make sure that we're in control of our story so that if someone coming into our community talks to someone from here, that they have the same passion and energy and are saying the same things as what the city wants people to see. So it starts off with that discovery, we go into strategy work. We'll come back to, um, the city representatives and share with them what our strategy recommendations are. And at that time, we'll show some creative concepts which will help reinforce the strategy. That's that emotional connection that people really seem to think branding is, it's not about the logo. The logo just helps reinforce that. And then while we're doing all that work, we're proposing that we're working on the website. So the website, we don't even look at the design until we get the branding work done. So it's more about content structure, you know, are people finding what they want, what shouldn't be on there, what should be on there? Who are our customers coming to the site? And so then once we have the branding done and we have that foundation set for the website, we lay the branding work over top. And then that branding work carries through to new identity pieces and also to the access channel, which also then those can be shared through the new social media channel that the city is starting on Facebook.
All right, I got maybe a dumb question, but.
Sure.
I'm a big proponent of easy, uh.
Intuitive websites?
Easy, uh, links.
Yes.
Will we be able to keep WebsterCity.com?
Oh, that's your domain, you own it.
Yep, okay.
Yes, yeah. You want to keep them short because if you get too long, people will really struggle with trying to, what was that again? So we want to keep it very short and there's already brand equity built up in WebsterCity.com, so there's no reason I would ever change that. I would leave it the way that it is, definitely. That's a good question, not a dumb question, that's a good one.
So the proposal says, assuming we'd go forward with something like this, it'd be a, like a six month thing before we'd have a product or a product and a.
Right, what I told Lindsay and Daniel was that we would want to get started right away. Their website contract, I believe expires in June, is that right, Daniel? So we would want to have phase one of the website, um, ready to go live come June and those would be the key pieces. And then we would continue with enhancements and things that maybe aren't as important as to get, put that initial launch. The branding work's got to get done first, but as soon as we get the go ahead, we'll start not only on the branding, but we'll start on the structure of the site. And that takes a lot of time and, but yes, to be live in June. What we want to do is be able to kind of get a jumpstart a little bit and we're actually behind the eight ball right now for, um, some industries that are moving into the area that we may want to entice people to move here, so.
Use the term key stakeholders.
Uh huh.
Now, who are we identifying as key stakeholders?
The key stakeholders are residents of the community, business owners, who'd be your city, um, your city staff as well. Those are the people that at the end of the day, if Webster City isn't thriving, that is an issue. Generally, you want to have a group that is representative as po, as much as possible of the whole community. Yep. Branding a city doesn't work when you go top down. It works when you go bottom up. Because a, again, it's, we're not trying to create something that's not there. We're trying to, um, enhance and reinforce the story that currently exists. So you want to talk to the people who are here in the community and are making the differences. So we would want their opinions on things.
They come to the Legion and Dodi.
Pardon?
They come into the Legion and Dodi.
Yes.
So, but that in mind, if the Legion had a website, would there, would we have a link to Legion under resources or something?
We can, yeah, that's all, that'll come out when we build the site, yeah. Yeah, I just want to see a community resource page.
Yeah, I just want it to be.
Very robust.
If I'm moving to Webster City, I want to just go to this page and be able to get all my answers and contacts or whatever.
And of course, we'd be linking this then, like we are now with the Hamilton County one as well, so this is.
We'll have some pictures with people in.
And we'll, we'll make sure there's pictures with people and people will have fun and doing things, not just our buildings. We have beautiful buildings, but we want our pictures of people in them.
Okay.
Some other questions?
Thanks very much. Thanks. Item ten on the agenda. Oh, we better do, yeah, we better make a motion.
So this would be a motion I'll request for the branding and.
So, I mean, with the thought that it's gonna, this is money we're spending already, we just got to find, we got to put it to a new, a new, uh, template, right? I mean, this is already funds we have set aside for what we're currently doing.
Yeah, well, it would be in excess of what we're currently doing. I think we're initially, um, yeah, the, the initial thought was, uh, our contract with Revis was coming up and that, that offered an opportunity to, to refresh the page, but then very quickly over the past year or so that I've been here and going through the frustrations of, of the website and other frustrations tied to it. It's just not user friendly from a customer perspective nor from, I guess, administrator staff perspective in terms of how, how we can upload and manage content. And so that led to the broader concept of, um, making sure we have a product that is functional on both sides of the table and, and so.
I think it's money well spent. I mean, we're, we're putting all the money into infrastructure on, on housing development and we have all the, the things going on in the region to bring, we want to bring people in. And I agree with what you said. I mean, the first thing somebody does is Webster City, Iowa, let's just type that in in Google and you'll find the city website. They want to find out information about the community and it's usually their first stop. And if they can't navigate that, it doesn't leave a good impression.
Yeah, for everyone's information, I guess, the, the city's logo and rebranding process was last undertaken, I think in two thousand seven or roughly those mid-two thousand years, the actual city's website hasn't been updated in terms of its, of its template, um, is two thousand thirteen, so.
It's a long time in this day.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Item ten is a request from the fire chief or two firemen to attend the fire department instructors conference in Indianapolis, Indiana on April twenty-second to twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen.
Yeah, Chuck's sitting back there bored, so.
Come on, Chuck, we like to share it around.
Thank you, Mayor, council, to see me today, Chuck Scanfield, Webster City Fire Department. Really excited about the opportunity. When I first came here, it was probably within the first month, month and a half, we had a budget meeting and I took a look at our training funds at that time and spoke with Dodi about the, what it would take to increase them just a little bit, possibly take from some other funds, uh, to be able to start sending people to the FDIC conference. So this has been a year in the main building already. And why FDIC? I know you've probably read, uh, the papers that I put together on that, but it's really one of the premier training locations across the country that firefighters from around the world attend. The fire service really tries to work off of, uh, what I would like, what I would call best practices. And as we learn new practices that work better than old ones, uh, as we know in any, in, in any profession, that's always a benefit. But in the fire service, it, it benefits people immediately. The one thing that I think of that, uh, that I've learned in going to this years ago, and it's been around for years and years. It's, it's been something that's gone on for a long time. Me and another firefighter attended and learned how to get personnel out of a bus. And you know, our children are one of our most important things. We learned how to, how to address the bus, which you wouldn't think, uh, Mayor, you might know this, having dealt with transportation a lot, but, uh, there are some unique factors about a bus that I was not aware of. And we actually had an actual several buses that we had to cut up, work on, remove things out of, and, and there really is a knack to that. Just, so it gives us a great avenue to learn best practices in our safety endeavors that we have with the fire department, so. So we're requesting the ability to spend some of the training funds that have already been allocated. We've already, they're already in the budget, it's not anything changing the budget at all. We're just looking for approval to send two personnel.
Would these be full-time employees or part-time?
Uh, it will be both, we'll have one full-time and one volunteer that will be attending. Both of them are officers in organizations, so. And, and in addition to them going, one of the stipulations is when they come back, they'll be sharing all that information with, with the department. And there's some, and you probably saw, there's some very unique and specialized training that they're going to be getting when they're there, so.
So, um, I like the idea that these two come back and do the training. It seems, uh, it makes me nervous, it's such a large amount of your training budget, leaving you so little for the rest of the year. I mean, is your, is your budget January to January, you know?
It's June to July, or excuse me, July to June.
So not really all year you got left, so.
Right, correct.
I think it's, I think it's money well spent, yeah. You're going to get trained, you're not going to get branded, so.
That's especially, and some of the classes that have been chosen are really going to be directly affecting our potential rescues with being such an agricultural environment, so.
That was my next question, there's so many different types of training they can go to. I assumed you'd gone through and helped, helped mold what would be beneficial for the community here.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, they will have, uh, the two, the, the first two days are hands-on training. And so they're in gear, they're in bunker gear and they're working, actually doing stuff with instructors that are, uh, just premier instructors across the country. If you look at most journal, fire journals, these are the guys that are writing the articles in those journals that are actually teaching the classes. So it's, it's phenomenal training. And, uh, so yeah, absolutely, I, I crossed several off, I said, no, I really don't want you to attend this.
High-rise, high-rise fire rescues.
So, yeah, good question, does that answer your question?
Yes, thanks very much.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Taking a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading the information. Sorry.
It's all right, we'll move pretty quick.
You're kidding, you're all right?
Yeah. And we will say aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Item eleven is a resolution amending terms of employment for city clerk.
Well, that wasn't a very good thing to pass.
So we recommended, what was it?
Yeah.
Point one, oh. So, um, did you want to talk about that at all, Daniel?
Yeah, the council met in closed session at, I believe, their last council meeting to review the, um, city clerk's performance. The direction was, um, favorable and agreed to provide her with an increase in compensation totaling two percent.
We'll call for a motion?
So.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Um, item D is reports and recommendations of officers, boards and commissions. One is a motion to accept the planning and zoning commission minutes of January twenty-second of two thousand eighteen.
Move to accept minutes?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion approved. Are there any other committee reports? Any other reports or recommendations? Are there any other items for the council? You got the city attorney update?
We stole your thunder, didn't we?
Yeah, 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 okay, so, uh, obviously I've already spoken in depth about the intersection agreement that we worked on for a significant amount of time this last month. Other things, uh, easement agreement which you guys will be getting, um, at the next public hearing. Well, now that we set the public hearing for the lot, uh, just based on Hy-Vee. So I prepared the agreement already for that, so you guys can see that. And then the other big thing, um, that we're working on currently and continuing to move forward on is the, um, site of the future wastewater treatment plants. So, um, we've already purchased a hundred foot strip, uh, now we're working on the plating, which, uh, P N Z approved it for the last meeting. So we're working on finalizing the subdivision plating and eventual purchase of the remaining fifty some acres.
Okay.
Contributing.
So I guess we'll call for motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, everybody.